Mr. Ackland, good afternoon. Our now call to order this meeting of the Moore County Board of Education. This is a regular business meeting on Monday, January 11th. I will note that I have with me all seven members of the Board of Education as well as Dr. Robert Grimacy, Board Attorney Neil Ramey and Board Clerk Ms. Sonia Potter. At this time, the floor is open for a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion the board will enter into closed session to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel information pursuant to General Statute 143-318, dot 11A, 1A5 and A6 and General Statute 115C-319 and to consult with the Board Attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318, dot 11A and 3.
The motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. A motion by Ms. Thompson, second by Mr. Hensley, all in favor. And we're going to have to go by individual vote again this week as well. I'm going to go down the screen as your pictures are appearing to me. Mr. Levy. How do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Dennison?
Aye.
Ms. Caldwell?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. The motion carries 7-0. We will now move into closed session with a return to an open meeting no later than 6:30. Thank you.
We are now live again.
Thank you, Mr. Echol. I'll call back to order the move of the Moore County Board of Education. Again, it is November January 11th. Do you hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
The move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Thompson to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Levy. Is there discussion? All right, seeing no one's hand go up, we will now vote. Ms. Thompson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Dennison.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Aye.
The motion carries seven oh. We will now read this to Ms. Murphy. The students who are joining us this evening to lead us in the pledge and a moment of inspiration.
I'm a senior at Pinecrest, and now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, I'm Evan Scal, and I'm a senior at Pinecrest High School. I'm here today to give the moment of inspiration. Real heroes are not made in the light, but are rather tested in the darkness. They're tested in those bleakest moments, and they're tested in their ability to not lose hope and to persevere through their challenges.
And a thank you to our two fine Pinecrest High School students. We appreciate them joining us virtually this evening. Now on to Ms. Thompson, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board members and audience, I would just like to ask everyone to just keep their thoughts with, we had a staff member to pass, and I know that we have a couple of our staff members that are ill, so just keep them in your thoughts, please, as we go into a moment of silence.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I will now go ahead and share with you the recognitions for the month of January. These are our Engage, Inspire, Succeed recognitions. Ms. Robin Stone from McDees Creek Elementary School is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Certified Staff Honoree. Her colleagues at McDees Creek refer to media specialist Robin Stone as the most positive, jolliest, supportive, and flexible media specialist they have ever known. Mrs. Stone distributed over 500 devices while continuing to teach her students during their specials time. She also takes the time to know each student and makes them feel welcomed and loved. She is the go-to gal when it comes to technology, and she has been incredibly helpful not only to staff, but to students and parents as well. She does what is best for the students every day, and she truly inspires students to read. She worked hard over the holiday break to ensure that brand-new students who started in January had devices and were ready to go. Mrs. Stone is a true inspiration to us all. Thank you so much, and congratulations, Mrs. Stone. Our next honoree is Christopher Cameron from Aberdeen Elementary School. He is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Support Staff Honoree. Mr. Cameron has developed the reputation for being a safe and reliable bus driver for Aberdeen schools. He always works well with the other bus drivers to ensure that students are getting where they need to go. He knows his daily routes and takes pride in connecting with each student. Whenever the administration assigns a task to Mr. Cameron, he accepts it with a smile. Recently, one of the tasks was to pick up a family in transition staying at a local hotel. Without hesitation, he completed his normal bus route and went back to the hotel to pick up the children so that others on the bus would not question the situation. Aside from driving a bus, Mr. Cameron is just as reliable in the classroom. He works with kindergarten students in a small group setting and strives to make every child, every day, the Tiger Way. Congratulations and thank you, Mr. Cameron. Our last honoree is from Northmore High School. Tyler Mabe is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Student Honoree. Tyler is a sophomore at Northmore High School. He always has a smiling and pleasant face. He takes care of raising and lowering the flag daily and is an integral part of the Mustang Enterprise, which constructed wooden Christmas trees and snowmen for sale before the break to earn money for their program. We can always count on Tyler to lend a hand and help out wherever needed. He represents the Mustang way, on and off campus. Congratulations, Tyler, and thank you for all you do. That is this evening's Engage, Inspire, Succeed honorees. Thank you so much to all. All right, at this time, we'll move to our program highlight. Dr. Grimacy, would you like to take us in? No, you're not. Unmute, Dr. Bob.
It's not very often that people tell me to unmute. At this time, Madam Chair and members of the board, it's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Mike Metcalf, Ms. Amanda Dixon, and Mr. Josh Newton, with a very special guest to provide this board with a focus on our highlight, which is our Career and College Promise and Sand Hills Promise programs.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair, members of the board. We are so grateful to maintain a strong relationship with Sand Hills Community College. I meet regularly with Dr. Rebecca Rash, the Vice President of Academic Affairs, and Andy Cordy, the Vice President of Continuing Education and Workforce Development, and I can confirm that the college's energy and commitment to providing learning opportunities for Moore County students is both remarkable and it must be celebrated. Amanda Dixon, Moore County Schools Director of Career and Technical Education, and Josh Newton, Pinecrest High School College and Career Promise Counselor, are with us to share the opportunities that are provided to the students through the College and Career Promise and Sand Hills Promise programs. And then, in addition, we have an honored guest, Dr. John Dempsey, President of Sand Hills Community College, who is here to share some thoughts with the board as well. I will turn it over to Ms. Dixon. And I'm waiting on Amanda. Amanda, are you there? I don't see Amanda. Is Amanda with us? I'm looking at the list right now. I do not see her name on the list at the moment. I don't know, something's... See if I can reach out to her. Well, then I can try to work through the presentation in Amanda's absence and apologize for that. Josh, I'm going to hand it over to you here in a moment, but I will work through this in Amanda's absence. The Career and College Promise Program, statewide program that offers structured opportunities at the community college level for qualified high school juniors and seniors to earn college credit or workforce continuing education credit toward an industry-recognized credential or certification. We have over 250 curriculum course options, 46 technical education pathways, seven continuing education course options, and currently for the fall, we had 888 Moore County students who were enrolled in the program. Or if you can move to the next. You may have seen this before. This is just so exciting, the expansion of the program. We use a five-year trend, and you notice that the total students who completed at least one college course...
I'm messaging her right now. She's on Hangouts.
That's all right. Well, continue through.
Ken, if you can... Oh, never mind, you did. Go ahead, sorry.
Total students who completed at least one college course increased from 2015-16 from 636 to over 1,000 students who completed at one course in 2019-20. That's an increase of 480. And of course, increases in the number of students, not just more students, but they're taking more courses, an increase of almost 2,000 additional courses in the five-year period of time. The total number of courses or college credit was earned, an increase there of just under 2,000, from 883 to 2,875. And our students are not just taking those courses, they're passing those courses. They've been extraordinarily successful. In 2015-16, we weren't so sure, just under 70% pass rate. Now, over 92, almost 93% pass rate. And I think I saw Amanda, that you're with us now? Hi, Amanda.
Hello, I've been here. I just couldn't get on. I could see you, but she couldn't see me.
Well, I'm going to let, turn it over to the next slide to you. How's that sound?
Okay, perfect. Just a little bit, I'm not real sure where Mike kind of just left me off in the middle of the sentence, but CTE is the practice of teaching specific career skills to our students in middle and high school. We started in 2017 trying to expand our CTE course offerings. We expected a Perkins Five implementation coming down, which was much needed for the career tech ed world, and these federal program and funding guidelines are also some of the guidelines that Sand Hills Community College also has to follow. So it was perfect timing for us to work on some intentional alignment. So it was perfect timing for us to work on some intentional alignment of those programs and pathways and to help prepare, you know, our students for a wide range of high-wage, high-skill, and high-demand careers. So we took advantage of that, started putting some things in place, and happy to share that we have over 6,000 students that have been enrolled in those courses. We offer 137 CTE course options, 28 career pathways, and represent 12 of the 16 career clusters. 8,850 student credentials have been earned from fall of 2017 until the spring of 2020, and 4,253 student credentials were earned just at Pinecrest alone since 2017. Can we go to the next slide? And just so you understand what career pathways are and the role that they play in this alignment, career pathways are sub-groupings of occupations within a career cluster. Those occupations are grouped into pathways based on a set of common knowledge or skills required for career success. And you can kind of see, it's a little small, but this is our career pathway model, and we have been able to work with Sand Hills to align. So all of these career pathways listed here, and these are all of the North Carolina CTE career pathway opportunities that we have. And as you can see, we go from agriculture to business management, manufacturing. There's something for everyone aligned to these pathways. And with Perkins Five and the intentional alignment and the opportunity to expand course options and course opportunities for our students, this is an actual cluster pathway example, and this is for our students who are interested in the healthcare professional career pathway. And you can kind of see on the left-hand side, here are our middle school, middle grades exploration opportunities that our students have. They kind of can't, they align and progress into our high school opportunities. And for those students who are really interested in the healthcare professional career pathway, they can become a CTE career pathway major. If they are really in tune to a specific area in the healthcare world, there are those opportunities. Or maybe that they're, you know, really not sure where they want to be in the healthcare career, so they may just want to refine their employability skills. And then we're also able to do with Sand Hills and the CCP pathway progression, they are able to pick up an associate degree in nursing. They can receive their pharmacy tech certification or certified medical administrative assistant. It all is based on those students and where their interests are. And it's really exciting that we do have something for every one of our students regardless of what their plans are post-high school. And next, I will turn this over to Mr. Newton, who's going to talk about how our partnership and our shared vision with Sand Hills continues to follow our students even after they graduate high school.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. I get to talk about maybe one of the better parts of that partnership, and that starts off with the Sand Hills Promise. The Sand Hills Promise is a scholarship opportunity that our students can earn. And when I say our students, it's really Moore County students. It could be Hope County students as well. These students could come from the public schools, private schools, it could be a registered homeschool. So Sand Hills is really working with all the Moore County school students, Moore County students in general. This scholarship that they can earn is a two-year scholarship for tuition and fees after graduation. We've had 147 students in the 1920 cohort, 232 more Moore County students are eligible for the 2021 cohort. And those numbers are not finalized just because of the opportunity that Sand Hills has given them to start in the spring, where normally students start in the fall. So again, all students have to do to earn this scholarship is take at least four Career and College Promise classes while they're in high school. In those classes, they have to maintain a 2.0 or a C average, and then this scholarship is available to them. So if we go to the next slide, I'm going to try to tell just two real brief stories about how students are using the Career and College Promise classes and then combining those with what opportunities they have after high school. Sam is a 2020 graduate of Pinecrest. He started taking Career and College Promise classes in the 11th grade, but really found his niche in the aviation management technical pathway, and that was his senior year. So he took that course, or took a course from that aviation pathway his senior year, has now used that, or excuse me, that Sand Hills Promise Scholarship, and is in his second semester over Sand Hills this year. And again, the aviation degree program there. Emily took a little different path. She's a 2019 graduate. She took all transfer classes while she was in high school from Sand Hills and went directly to NC State after graduation. She's on track to actually graduate in three years based on the number of credits she was able to accumulate. But the thing about her story that I liked the most is that she enjoyed and gotten so much out of Sand Hills as a high school student that just because she went to NC State directly, she's come back to Sand Hills for the last two summers to take, to take more classes from them. She's again on track to finish her degree in three years, and with Sand Hills, she's going to do that without ever having to take more than 15 semester hours in a semester. So she's, she's a great story. Sam's a great story because they give you the two different main tracks that our students can take. It's not just transfer classes, but it's also the technical opportunities that students have. The last slide that'll talk for me about is just some specific to Pinecrest numbers. The, as you saw earlier with the Dr. Metcalf, the Pinecrest, at Pinecrest, the program has really ballooned. We had over 1,700 students take these courses since the fall of 2017. Those students have earned almost 3,300 credits. So it's really remarkable what they're doing. Specifically this year, you see the number of 382 students that took classes in the fall. That number's jumped up to close to 420 in the spring. And when you look at the year in total, we're going to have just below 500 different students take courses from Sand Hills this year. That's about one in every two students that are using this, using this great opportunity to kind of further that partnership. So again, almost 50% of our 11th and 12th grade students are taking advantage of this. I'll leave it to hand off to Dr. Dempsey. I've heard him called special and honorable, so Dr. Dempsey, I'll let you kind of conclude and appreciate it and would like to say a thank you from Moore County Schools to what Sand Hills is bringing our students. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Josh. I hope you guys can hear me. I, I must tell you that as I look at these numbers, I'd like to take credit for all of this, but the truth of the matter is, is the numbers sort of lollygagged along until Bob Grimace got there and Andy Cordy and Bob Grimace and Rebecca Roush, who was home, by the way, with COVID. She's gotten over it, but she's listening, she's listening to our broadcast here. It takes people to do these things and it takes the great people of the Moore County schools, and we have a similar partnership in Hope County. The great thing is, I can look anybody in the eye and I can say, you can go to Sand Hills for free. That's a pretty nice thing to be able to say to people. It's a pretty nice thing to be able to say to a company that's thinking about locating a business here. It's a pretty nice thing to be able to say to a young family that's thinking about moving here. And it's all made possible, I might add, by the Sand Hills Community College Foundation. I spend most of my time running after, chasing after people, trying to get them to give me money to no apparent purpose, but it actually does have a purpose and it helps us not only with the, not only with the, the Moore County school kids, but through our guarantors program, through our scholarships. It, it all goes back to the generosity of the people in the community, the hard work of people like Dr. Grimace and, and Dr. Roush, and, and a realization that none of us are free agents anymore. We don't all operate in silos. We have to operate together. With all due apologies to the math teachers, one plus one plus one equals about 14. And that's what we've discovered, and we're so thrilled to be partners with what we think is just about the best school system in the business, the Moore County schools, and we appreciate everything you do for us.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Metcalf. Is there a wrap-up here?
Just that we're here to take any questions or comments from the board. We're just so proud of the work and the accomplishments, particularly over the last five or six years. And add on to that, what Josh mentioned there, Dr. Dempsey, just on a personal level, thank you for the commitment to our students and the opportunities that you're providing for them. Just cannot thank you enough.
Our pleasure, Mike.
Definitely, Dr. Dempsey. I know, I think we do have a few questions, and by way of clarification, real quickly, this would be to Ms. Dixon. I know we have focused here, and because Josh Newton lives and breathes Pinecrest for many years, we hear a little bit more about Pinecrest because it's very stationed, but with the new science classrooms at Northmore, I understand there's going to be an uptick in nursing programs.
We are currently working to get the CNA program, state board approved, through DPI and through the nursing board. But also, we've been able to expand and offer some courses at Sand Hills this past semester through the new continuing educational enrollment opportunity that we have with Sand Hills. You know, we're looking at, you know, continuing to offer our core construction sustainability program there. We had huge success this past semester in spite of COVID with our EKG certification. You know, we're looking at being able to expand our pharmacy tech program to where we here in Moore County, you know, do not have any additional months of employment or any additional supply program, or supply money to expand that program, but we can partner with Sand Hills and continue to offer that on different campuses. But right now, we are serving students from all schools and are currently, you know, pulling some programs at each high school. We had a huge success also with the firefighter program this past semester, and those students have done great, and they, I believe we have 10 students that just started the second phase of that, and they represent all three high schools, and they're working right here in the training facility here in Carthage. Yes.
Thank you. Nothing better than knowing that our children are ready to fully function as they leave high school. Mr. Hensley, I believe you've got a hand up with your question?
I do. I got a couple things to say and then I got a couple questions for Dr. Dempsey. And I apologize in advance for my voice. You know, I'm hoarse because of my vocal cords, but this is an awesome program. Sand Hills Community College is commended for setting up and funding it. One of my daughters, who's a senior at Pinecrest, is currently attending Sand Hills Community College, by the way. And a couple observations. I mean, quite frankly, if all the Pinecrest students returned to Pinecrest, I think Pinecrest could collapse, would collapse. So, you know, this provides a place for the overflow of students if nothing else. But one other comment, the, as we all know, the Advanced Career Center didn't get built, but you know what? This is its implementation in spirit, and again, everyone wants to be commended. Here's my questions for you, Dr. Dempsey. You mentioned that you spend your time raising money, talking to people, raising money to fund programs like this. How much did you guys raise to fund this?
Well, the reality is, I don't want to get into the weeds here, but the reality is that the Pinehurst, or the, the Sand Hills Promise program costs us about $300,000 a year. And rather than saddle our development office with the responsibility of raising that money in addition to raising all the money they have to do for other things, we had a capital campaign a couple of, about a year ago, Mr. Hensley, and we raised about $15 million, six of which we appropriated to create an endowment to support the, the Sand Hills Promise forever, hopefully.
So my follow-on question is, approximately how much does Sand Hill Community College raise each year for various efforts?
You know, you wouldn't be far wrong if you said $2 million.
Yeah. And then what's the total size of Sand Hill Community College's endowment?
About $40 million.
About $40 million. Yeah, we have a very generous, we have a segment of our community that's able to, to support causes like this, and they're very generous in that regard, so I commend you for those efforts.
They are, although I must honestly tell you, there are no other colleges in the, in the, in the area. It's not like Durham Tech has to worry about Duke down the street. And I always tell people that if you can't raise money living in Pinehurst for 32 years, they ought to take your license away from you. So it has most to do with the circumstances, but, but we have a very generous community. Yes, sir.
Yeah, awesome. Well, thank you. And again, I think the highest praise is that, you know, again, the Advanced Career Center didn't get physically built, but you know, this is a step towards, towards implementing that, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Levy, I believe you had a question?
Yeah, I think it's more by the way of a comment, kind of a question. It's my understanding that all of our Moore County students, private and, and charter students can participate in that. Is this correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's just a wonderful thing.
Homeschool, whatever.
Okay, well, that's just a wonderful thing, and I, I, I hope that gets out to the public. And, and I know you, you've made it public, but what you have done and what Sand Hills has done is to create a free college, which is something that the country is arguing about and arguing about. And while the country argues about it and where the money's coming from, you did it.
We went out and did it.
That's right, and that is to be absolutely commended. And I, I, I know our schools appreciate it, and I think all the citizens of Moore County should appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, Bob. Appreciate that.
And Ms. Thompson?
I just want to just say thank you to one of my favorite men, Dr. Dempsey.
Where's, where's my favorite school board member? There she is.
Thank you so much, and thank all of your staff, Dr. Roush and Andy Cordy. Working with them and the collaboration with our team has always been tremendous. And we have so many students across the county that if it had not been for this program, they would not have been able to go to college. So this provided them with ongoing educational opportunities that I know that they would not have been able to, to pay for. So thank you, thanks, thanks to your trustees, Dr. Dempsey. We just appreciate your collaboration with us. We, we just, we couldn't have made it without this program for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
I believe we just signed a contract with Dr. Dempsey then last spring to continue this program long, so.
Yes.
Glad to see that it's going to continue because it certainly does make a difference. Mr. Newton, would you like to add anything else before we move on?
No, ma'am.
Well, we're proud of what you do and the selling you do of the program to our students, too. A lot of high school students don't quite understand what benefits can be, but I know you do a good job of telling it. Ms. Dixon, anything else?
No, it's just, it really is a true benefit to have this partnership and this shared vision. This doesn't happen everywhere, and so it is to be commended, and we are extremely fortunate. I spent the afternoon meeting with Andy and her team and exploring opportunities and how we can continue to move forward and expand this. So just excited that we are able to have the partnership and shared vision that we do. So thank you to everyone that makes that happen.
I think Ms. Dixon has a comment.
Yeah, I do. Dr. Dempsey, John, I know you were always thinking of things you can do for the students in Moore County. What's your next plan? You've got to have something in mind.
Well, I, you know, I don't know. I, I was about to say that I, you asked, I believe it was Mr. Hensley asked about the, about the students from private schools, or maybe that was Bob. I, I teach, as, as some of you know, and I teach at Sand Hills, and last semester I taught, and I had students in my class from the Moore County schools, students in my class from the Hope County schools, students in my class from Santa Oak High School, students in my class who were regular, if there is such a thing, Sand Hills students, students in my class who are listening on Zoom from Duke University, and, and students in my class who had been homeschooled. And the thing that makes community colleges the most fascinating places on earth is the variety that they contain. Just when you think you have it figured out, you discover that you're wrong. And, and that variety and this mixture of educational opportunities for people is just, it's just fabulous. And we are, we are so fortunate to be able to, to be in a position to have the people in this community who helped make it possible. So our thanks to you and our best wishes to you as this unusual school year keeps rumbling right along. rumbling right along.
Thanks, John.
Speaking of rumbling along, any chance of funding an activity bus or two?
You know, that's a good question. Uh, but I'm afraid the answer is no, but it, but it is a good question nonetheless.
Fair enough. That was an inside joke based upon previous, uh, Board of Education meetings.
I, I would offer to my friend, John Dempsey, beware.
Listen, your Packers are still, uh, uh, alive in the playoffs, Bob.
Yes, but, but, but fear the Browns, Dr. Dempsey.
I, I, listen, you're a lucky duck.
Yes. If I might, Madam Chair, if I could, before Dr. Dempsey checks out, I do, do want to offer my compliments and thanks to this, uh, to the team that made the presentation this evening. Stacy Patterson could not join us this evening, but otherwise we'd have similar data from Union Pines and Northmore that showed that the program is going full guns at those schools as well, if, as well. I would like to add that if there, uh, to Mr. Dennison's question, uh, what is the next frontier? Well, it's not, Dr. Dempsey's done for us about all that he can do. The next frontier for me is, is helping to get the message out to our students and our families that in order to qualify for Sand Hills Promise, you, you need to meet those standards with the Career and College Promise Program. And to do that, you need to be college-ready by the end of 10th grade. And, and that's sort of the challenge. Uh, if you're in sixth and seventh and eighth grade right now, uh, you don't have to wait for the end of 12th grade to go to college. You can start going to college at the end of 10th grade, but to do that, you have to be ready. You have to be willing to do your homework. You have to be willing to pay attention in class. You have to be willing to trust your teachers and, and, and form that bond with your teacher and find that next level in your studies, uh, and, and carry that out. If you do that, uh, you can be in a position to qualify for these classes during your junior and senior year. Take those four classes, get that grade point average that you need to have and, um, and start yourself along the path of any one of these great programs that are available to you. There's lots of capacity there. Uh, there's no waiting list. Uh, if you qualify, you're in and, uh, we're, we're looking forward to that happening. Anan, Amanda and her team have done a great job of building that interest early on and it's our hope that that's going to filter down and, and add great value to our students' motivation for all of their academic outcomes moving forward. So, Mr. Dennison, that's, that's what I would offer. I don't know about what more Sand Hills can do for us, but I know what we can do for ourselves and that, that's a vision that I have here, um, as we move forward. Thank you, Dr. Dempsey.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you to all involved. Dr. Grimacy, you sounded like Josh Newton selling this program to students.
I, I don't, I don't, I can't, I can't touch Josh.
Because he does, uh, I might add, um, for Mr. Levy's benefit really, because I know one of the things that came up during your campaign was some emphasis on career and technical programs and what might actually be offered within the schools. And I think if you go back and look at one of those earlier slides, uh, that came up with the number of programs that are offered, you will be so impressed to see that we've already got it covered. Um, so I'm sure we'll hear more about the career and technical aspect as our sessions go on, but we're very proud of what they're doing and we sure appreciate everyone who, who came in tonight and, and shared this with us. So thank you for, for all of it.
Right.
Okay, we will now move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, this is Ed. I move the consent agenda to be approved.
Motion by Ms.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dennison, second by Ms. Thompson. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll now vote. Um, Mr. Hensley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Caldwell?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
And Mr. Dennison?
Aye.
And then the chair also votes aye. Motion carries seven oh. All right, we are now, at this time, moved to public address to the board and, uh, rather than deferring to Vice Chair Thompson, uh, we're going to defer to Ms. Catherine Murphy, who has gathered, uh, public address. Ms. Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, we have two requests for, uh, call-in comments and one, uh, written comment submitted. So I'm going to go ahead and contact the first, uh, individual who wishes to provide public comment.
Thank you.
As we're waiting for that, I, um, I did want to tell the board, I got something in my PO box. It was a letter that they wanted me to read, but we can't do that. So I'm just going to email it to you all so you guys can read it.
Madam Chair, I have Mr. Lowell Simon on the line.
I got something in my PO box. It was a letter that one week, so I'm going to email it to you all.
Give me one second. Let me just check on the volume here. Hold on.
Thank you. I'm not sure if everyone can hear me. I've muted my computer, so hopefully you all can hear me.
It looks like.
I would like to use, sorry.
You look good to go.
Okay. I see my clock's not ticking down, so, uh, ready to go?
Yes.
Good. Okay. I would like to use my time to address the unprofessional and likely illegal behavior of two of our board members. As we all witnessed this past Wednesday, words matter. The use of an elected position to profit misinformation and misrepresentation has proven to be even more dangerous than we feared. The use of a public forum to intentionally make malicious and libelous statements, imply the disclosure of confidential information and to stifle intelligent discourse is not only immoral and illegal, but a clear violation of the First Amendment of the Constitution. As many of us are aware, in a January 5th Facebook paste to his post, sorry, to his official page, Mr. Hensley accused the chair of, quote, improper slash illegal actions, end quote, regarding adding items to the agenda. He and Mr. Levy justified that opinion by misrepresenting Board Policy Number 1321. Both claimed that properly submitted agenda items are required to be added to the agenda. However, the policy itself states that such items may be requested and specifically leaves setting the agenda to the chair and the superintendent. To conflate the term required with the term may and to misrepresent what a request is demonstrates either willful intent or misguided ignorance on the part of those board members resulting in a misled and misinformed public. To then accuse the chair and other board members of illegal action constitutes flagrant violations of all five of the board's ethical requirements as stated in Rule Number 1419. More importantly, Mr. Hensley has misused his public office by disseminating this false information and effectively eliminating public disclosure and discourse challenges. Two years ago, almost to the day, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Fourth Circuit, which has jurisdiction over Moore County, ruled that public officials cannot block critical comments on digital platforms used to conduct official government business. The court emphasized the comments section of the page, which is said is a public forum that government officials cannot censor. The violation of our Constitution's First Amendment by Mr. Hensley sets an unacceptably low bar for Moore County school and students. I respectfully request that the superintendent and the board attorney fulfill their responsibilities to Moore County citizens by no longer permitting board members to allude to proofed default statements in public forums and for board members to enforce their own code of ethics and their sworn allegiance to the U.S. Constitution. There is much more to discuss, however, my time does not permit it. Thank you for your attention and for all that you do.
We're back to Ms. Murphy.
Yes, the next caller is Mr. Fenton Wilkinson. I will get him on the line now.
Thank you. Please proceed.
I am here to razzle-dazzle you with some facts and ask you not to be bamboozled by Mr. Hensley's dream world of $500,000, an acre land a half a mile away and $200,000 home next door. One year ago, your board can appraisal said the land value of the entire 17-acre site free and clear was only $96,000. The trust appraisal valued the 17 acres for $125,000, but noted that was for raw land, so the $125,000 must be reduced by the cost for building demolition and removal. To achieve Mr. Hensley's dream of upscale condos on Southern Pines Primary would require a radical rezone that is not only inconsistent with, but is antagonistic towards the Southern Pines Comp Plan, UDO and DFI study. The rezone would have the full resistance of West Southern Pines residents and the broader Southern Pines folks as well. Ask Mr. Ramey the likely fate of such a rezone request. Before you commit significant resources to achieving the Hensley dream, I ask that you focus on the core difference between the Hensley and Trust vision. Hensley's vision is about one thing and one thing only, wanting money. You're undertaking a complex and costly path in the hope for receiving more money. Actually getting it is far from certain. I ask you to think through everything that will actually be involved. Just one example, can you carve off a half acre cemetery when the Southern Pines UDO requires a minimum of five acres for a cemetery? However, the biggest cost of Hensley's vision is that it will be the first irretrievable nail in the coffin for the West Southern Pines community. This is more than just about the school. It's about the fate of historic West Southern Pines. Upscale condos at Southern Pines Primary would be the tipping point towards extinction of West Southern Pines through gentrification. The Trust vision champions revitalizing West Southern Pines, honoring and preserving its rich history and culture while rebuilding a stronger economic and social fabric. West Southern Pines is not asking to be revitalized. The community is asking for the opportunity to revitalize ourselves. That's hardcore conservative values. The Trust has said it will pay Moore County schools fair market value. The community is not asking government to redevelop the school. The Trust is shepherding that. The choice is clear. You try to get more money and destroy a historic community or accept fair market value to meet your constitutional obligations while allowing a marginalized community to revitalize itself. Ms. Caldwell, under the Hensley path, a 120-year-old church whose choir brought tears to eyes will likely no longer exist in 10 to 15 years. The board's fiduciary duty is not just about the money. Thank you.
All right, we're back to you, Ms. Murphy.
Yes, uh, the final comment for tonight is submitted by Susan Baxter from West End. Dear Board of Education, I write this as an effort to applaud the work of the four returning Board of Education members who are doing their best to keep running the Moore County Schools while the three newest threesome attempts to tear apart our fine system. The new members need to remember the old saying, Rome wasn't built in a day, and know that they cannot and should not rush into making changes and establishing policies so quickly either. They must learn that they now serve on a board, they don't work independently, and as grown men, they must put away their egos and learn to serve others selflessly. These three keep noting that the voters of Moore County have spoken, but they need to remember that a very large portion of the Moore County voters spoke in a different way. We like what we have. We are proud of our superintendent and the finest school system in the state. They are making decisions that affect all of us and they need to make these without personal attacks and vendettas against others. I sincerely hope that Mr. Holmes, Mr. Levy and Mr. Hensley will discover a spirit that arises from the joy of teamwork and will get literally on board to continue to make good things happen. The time for bickering is past. And that concludes public comment for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All right, we'll now move on to board action. Um, first item, endorsement to gather public comment on the updated plan for sustainable improvement. Dr. Grimacy?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to introduce Mr. Barath, who will not repeat the extended presentation he did during the work session. However, he does have a few follow-ups that, uh, uh, some, um, little homework that he did between, uh, based on board members' questions last week and, uh, and make himself available for any further questions this week. Just want to remind the board that the only question before you tonight is, uh, mere endorsement of the, um, uh, administration's plan to gather public comment to be part of your discussion at your work session in February when, when you all, uh, look at the staff's proposed priorities and, uh, you know, consider whatever adjustments you might want to make to make them your priorities. Mr. Barath?
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Good evening, everybody. Um, so as Dr. Grimacy said, not to reiterate what we went through at the work session last week, everything that's presented to you here is a summary of the same information as presented. However, at the request of Board Member Levy, uh, I emailed, uh, a copy of the needs for the next, uh, two years to everybody in an Excel format. Uh, so that information was sent and inclusive in that was the identifiers for projects for the Northern Moore region and all schools that are under $100,000, uh, in that highlighted. So the information attached here is consistent with what was presented to the board last week. And again, it comes with a recommendation, the superintendent to authorize the posting of this plan, uh, on the school district website with an invitation for public comment, which would open tomorrow, January 12th and close January 26th, the results of which will be presented to the board at their February work session for further consideration and discussion. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
If I might, Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to add to board members, the invitation that, uh, there was a lot of information that was shared last week. I know a number of you have already dug deeply into it, um, but as the, the next few weeks pass by, uh, as you have the opportunity to look at, if you have any questions, please feel free to send those to John and myself and, uh, we'll be happy to, uh, you know, work with you through these next few weeks, uh, leading up to the work session. Madam Chair, we're at your, at, at the board's, uh, service.
The chair will entertain a motion to, uh, author our staff to invite public comment on the updated plan. Um, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Thompson. Uh, the floor is open for discussion and of course, remember what the motion actually is. We're not really discussing the items on the list, but giving the public the opportunity to do so. Um, Mr. Levy?
Yes, uh, I wanted to, uh, make sure that the public understood that they need to look over these, um, these things. I, I, I do have one question. In part of the presentation, it seemed like there was another school bus which was going to be purchased, uh, based on some, something, uh, happening on March 1st. Am I incorrect on that?
No, you're not correct on that. The, uh, on March 1st, um, we intend to bring the, the board had requested a, a more detailed plan about what we current do, currently do to fund activity buses and what would be a, a plan for sustaining, um, activity bus maintenance and replacement in the future. And so, uh, March 1st, uh, Mr. Levy, the March work session would be when we'll bring that plan back to you. And what the board does with that relative to the, um, uh, 20-year sustainability plan will be subject to conversation at, at that time.
And I wanted the, uh, thank you, thank you, Dr. Grimacy. And I wanted the public to pay special attention to the need to prioritize things in the northern part of the county. Um, I remember, uh, at our last session, there was a woman who came in from the northern part of the county and she was extremely upset, uh, that we had, um, that we had prioritized. extremely upset that we had prioritized basically the lower part of the county for the new schools. This is the opportunity for people, especially the upper part of the county, to say, no, we want to prioritize things in the upper part of the county as well as the central part of the county with respect to Carthage. And I think they're deserving of that. We want to make sure that we know that this portion of the county is not forgotten. And in that respect, I would hope that the public would take a very, very close look at something in that plan that I thought was questionable, and that is that a priority number, I believe it's either number six or number eight, is, number eight, is a track for Pinecrest costing over $1 million. And yet, the priority number 39 is a track for Northmore. And after that priority, below the priority for the Pinecrest track are things such as roofs and cameras on buses. So, I hope that the public will give us some serious input into this because we need to make sure that we're prioritizing the way the public wants us to prioritize. And this is the chance for the people in the northern part of the county to say, no, we want some priority here. Thank you.
Mr. Dennison. Mr. Dennison.
Looks like he's frozen up there, Madam Chair.
He might be. If someone can notify him. Mr. Hensley has a hand raised.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a couple comments on this. I invite the public to review the information, think deeply about the problems and issues, and provide meaningful comments. Now's the time for outside-the-box thinking on how to reduce costs and how to get these improvements done in five to seven years, not 20 years. 20 years is just simply, we need to do better than that. No ideas are off the table. We need solutions, and I'm quite sure that if everyone puts their heads together and looks at this, I'm quite sure the solutions are out there. And I would say to any member of the public, if you don't want to share your thoughts in public, feel free to send them in via email or discuss them in person with myself or any other Board members, and we'll make sure that they get thoughtfully considered. And finally, based upon what we learned during the Sand Hills Promise, I would like to see a much more ambitious plan for our Moore County Schools Public Education Foundation. Moore County School raises, I'm sorry, Sand Hills Community College raises millions of dollars each year to fund their needs. And as I pointed out during the Sand Hills Promise portion, we have a very wealthy and generous portion of our community. Let's tap into that, and hopefully, we can more aggressively attack these capital needs. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. I think Mr. Dennison is back on. Mr. Dennison?
I am, I am. Sorry, I've lost you all two times tonight. I have one question for John. John, how much money do we have available right now that we're not using for construction other than the money that was mentioned in your presentation? How much money do we have right now that's available for capital needs, meaning as a capital need?
Mr. Dennison, you have to give me a second to go back to the presentation where we said the lottery and our local capital allotment. I want to say it was our local capital is approximately over $500,000 available right now. A lottery, again, I just have to get that number in front of me here, sir, if you'll forgive me.
No, that's fine. Other words, we don't have nearly the capital available right now that we can even really do some of these projects we're talking about.
If I might, Mr. Dennison?
Yes, sir.
Just illuminate. I think that what you'll find, I believe it's on slides six, seven, and eight, maybe now there's four slides there in a row that can show you that it's money that you have on hand, and then it's potential funds as they become available over the next 18 months. Because even if you get the eight-point-something million dollars to fund all these projects, Mr. Barath laid out some of the obstacles that have to do with some projects needing to be done when children are out of school, making sure there's design time built into it. So, with the flow of lottery and local capital that you're going to have available over the next 18 to 24 months, combined with the potential of additional supplemental revenues from the sale of your properties and any funds left over in the set-aside that we've held back in lottery, you're going to come pretty close to having the money to address, if the Board chooses, all those projects. You've got a good shot at all those projects on that sheet where John had condensed them. So, it's not about just a single amount of money. It's about what could be available to you over the next 18 months, assuming you use the traditional approach, and we're not able to in the meantime, you know, come up with an alternative.
Okay, I understand that. But bottom line to me is, for all these needs we have, you know, we're way short. So, I have a couple comments about the survey. I would like to ask the public to respond to these questions. Do you think it is important for our school facilities to be properly maintained? We have provided a comprehensive plan to keep our facilities properly maintained that will cost $1.9 million additional per year more than what we're receiving now, and the only source of funds that would come from the county. So, do you think our county should provide the funding that we need to keep our facilities properly maintained? That's it. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Levy, is your? Okay, are there other questions? All right, seeing that, remember that this is simply the motion to open the portal for public comment on the, to authorize the staff to invite public comment on the updated plan through an online portal that would be made available from January 12 through January 26. All right, we'll now move to the question. Mr. Dennison, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Caldwell?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Mr. Hensley?
Aye.[1050.74]
And the profit sharing provision. The concern is that a bank foreclosure or a similar for sale would bypass the right to first refusal and profit sharing provisions, creating a possible scenario where a windfall for Moore Montessori could occur. This would happen in such a case where Moore Montessori could default on the loan. The bank foreclosed. The sale could exceed the $1.6 million. The right of first refusal would be inoperative and any sale proceeds over that loan amount would be distributed back to Moore Montessori. So a board attorney has a proposed provision addressing this current concern by distinguishing between voluntary and involuntary sales and providing that all excess profits from the foreclosure sale in this example, not just a portion, would be remitted to the board. Again, these are all in an effort as not to have a situation where Moore Montessori would be considered profiteering from the purchase of the property. And again, while the board attorney, Moore Montessori's attorney have been in frequent contact and discussed the lease managed by phone, at the time of this executive summary being issued, there was non-op train to receive a response by Moore Montessori's representative. That has been attached and updated to the summary here for your review and revision, along with the counter offer that was first drafted up, along with the proposed updated one and Moore Montessori's non-objection to the opinion of counsel letter and indemnification. I will note that Moore Montessori in their letter, I'll get to that here in a second, has made a few key points in here. In what is referenced in one of their initial statements is they have no wish or desire to flip the property following the sale or attempt to secure a windfall of profit in the future. And that is also the grounds upon which they did not object to any of the proposed provisions in there. They also said that they will agree that all rental proceeds be utilized for the sole in exclusive purpose of maintaining the physical integrity of the school grounds and of capital improvements on the school grounds. And they want to execute agreement that memorializes that. They're also willing to provide us with a right of first refusal to repurchase the school grounds, which is explained in detail in the proposed agreement. And they have also agreed to the 15-year profit plan that had originally been proposed. They did object to the placement of any restrictive covenant on the property will limit the use, limiting the use of the public school would make financing nearly impossible and be, to quote them, "a poison pill" to the agreement. They have also issued an opinion of letter attached in the indemnification agreement. They have also attached in there, I think was the, oh, yes, and then the indemnification agreement attached at the end. Apologies. Mr. Ramey is with us. He also has done the lion's share of this, and I would invite him to jump in with any additional comments regarding this presentation.
Nothing to add. That's a good summary, Mr. Barath. I guess I could just summarize by saying that it's my understanding that, and I just want to give my thanks to Mr. Barath, real estate counsel, and Moore Montessori's attorneys, all of whom have put a great deal of work into, you know, the goal to get this done as soon as possible. I think we've made great progress. Current status is, my understanding is, Moore Montessori's attorney support and will recommend this agreement with the deletion of the restrictive covenant. So at this point, we'll turn it over to the board. We've got something that I think will be a workable agreement. If there's any further feedback, we'll take it at this time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
And the board, the chair will not entertain a motion concerning our procedure or any changes to the contract as presented. Does anyone have a, Mr. Hensley?
Madam Chair, I'd like to, before I propose a motion, I'd like to do some discussion if that's acceptable. So first of all, like Mr. Ramey, I'd like to thank, well, I want to thank the attorneys. During the last work session, this board set a high bar on our expectations to protect the interest of Moore County taxpayers and the students of Moore County schools. I was very pleasantly surprised when I saw the agenda. I was pleasantly surprised that both our attorney and Moore Montessori Community School and their communities, really their attorneys, rolled up their sleeve and came up with an amicable solution which meets the board's intent while allowing Moore Montessori Community School to have an agreement acceptable to them that meets their needs. This agreement is a win for taxpayers of Moore County and Moore County public schools. It gives parental choice. This will offer increased educational opportunities and due to the mission of Moore Montessori Community School and their overweighting of admissions to disadvantage children, most of these educational opportunities will go to children in underserved and underprivileged communities. However, there are a couple technical issues with the agreement, which I believe are mere oversights, not disagreement to the spirit of the agreement in Moore Montessori Community School's proposal that's spelled out in paragraph one of the Van Camp memo. The first thing I want to talk about is the calculation of the sale of small parcels. This is a very arcane, a very detailed and arcane issue. So with your permission, I prepared a couple slides to make sure the public understands and the board understands. So with your permission, I would like to show these slides.
Mr. Hensley, I think that we would probably need a motion to make that worthwhile, and I'm not sure that, that we need to actually put those slides up at this point, since you've done a good job of explaining them to the actual board. Can you, can you simply give us a concise?
Mr. Hensley, can I, can I, tell me if this is not your motion? Would that be to make the, the sale of the small parcel, the right of first refusal for any portions of parcel, to have the same, to have the same rules as the right of first refusal for the whole of the parcel? And number two, my request that the words "capital" be replaced with "real property." Is that what you asked?
Well, at this point, I think we'll make it the Levy motion.
No, 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 this is, this is your, no, this is your, you thought this up. I don't want to.
Well, yes, I would add one thing. So, yes, my motion is to delegate the authority, to delegate authority to the superintendent and board attorney to finish negotiations and sign the contract, provided that, and there's three things, provided that the small parcel calculations are changed to be in accordance with the, with the, with the parcel calculations for the entire sale of the property. Secondly, that the terms "capital improvements" be changed to "real property" where it refers to that in proceeds of rental income. And thirdly, that the right of first refusal calculations are also recorded into the memo of understanding in addition to the profit sharing portions which were already there.
Your second?
I'll second.
All right, the motion has been made by Mr. Hensley and seconded by Mr. Levy, and at this point, we can go to further discussion if there is someone, now there, Mr. Dennison or he have a comment?
Yeah, Mr. Hensley, David, if it's okay, I think you mentioned the superintendent and the attorney. I'd like to also include the chair, the board chair, so the board has representation, if that's fine with you.
Yes, I believe that will require amendment. Yes, I'm in support of that.
As, as.
Representation to the negotiations.
As am I, the second.
All right, so the motion has been moved to be amended and has been seconded, and that motion has been seconded. Are there objections to that change to the motion? All right, Mr.?
Madam Chair, for the record, Mr. Hensley, as, well, legal counsel and I have listened, Mr. Hensley and Mr. Levy have articulated the details in explaining this, and at this time, we understand what the expectations are. So just for the record, I want to clarify that we do understand what those expectations are.
Since the person who made the motion and the secondor have accepted the change, I don't think we need to vote on the change to the motion. And Mr. Holmes, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Are there other comments or questions at this point?
Madam Chair, if I may for clarification to the board attorney, Neil, does the motion need to include the removal of paragraph 24E as proposed?
Yes, that's a good point. I think we, it was sort of implicit in understanding that that's a deal breaker for Moore Montessori, and if we're going, as they've, as they've relayed. So for clarity, I mean, I think that's, that was the intent behind this motion, but for purposes of clarifying the motion, if it's all right, we haven't called the question yet. If we can just, again, informally, as the chair's done already, get the person who made the motion and seconded the motion to agree that that would be part of the changes to the agreement. We would delete the restrictive covenant provision, revise the agreement to use the same approach for determining what we call the stipulated price of the smaller parcel that's currently used to determine the stipulated price of the entire property, and we change the term "capital improvements" to "real property improvements" where indicated.
And I, I believe counsel, it's actually using the, the formula for the, for the whole of the property to apply to the smaller property.
I worded that, that was mistaken.
That's okay. That's all right.
Mr. Hensley, we accept that additional change.
Yes, the paragraph 24F of the proposed agreement should be struck in its entirety. Specific paragraph 24F is the restrictive covenants that forever be used for public education.
I'm not sure if it's 24F. I'll look it up.
24E.
E.
There's a correction here. Our similar shall agree that the deed conveying the properties shall include a covenant running with the land.
Right.
That change?
Yes, I'll, I'll accept that change. And I wanted to, to just say one further thing. My basic preference was always for us to retain the property and, and to have it available for a future school. This, through some hard bargaining and the like, this seems to be a great compromise. And I'd like to, to thank both counsel and Mr. Hensley for coming up with this, with this great compromise so that we can provide real education for as many of our Moore County students as possible.
I might also add the same line, because we've just opened the portal for public comment on other very pressing needs for capital improvements within some of our other buildings. I look at that 1.6, and I think, you know, we can get started. So let's, let's proceed with this. All right, seeing no one else asking for discussion, we'll now move to the question. All those in favor, and Mr. Ramey, do you want to attempt to read this motion again?
I think, I think we've stated it clearly enough already, Madam Chair, and if it's, if it's all right, if there's no members object, we can say, just vote on the motion. I think the minutes will go to reflect that, as Dr. Grimace said, we fully understand what's intended here and will make it happen.
Okay, and we can always refer to the, the paper, see, see. All right, so we want to move to vote. Mr. Hensley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Ms. Caldwell?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Mr. Dennison?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. The motion carries 7-0. We will refer to Mr. Ramey and back to Mr. Barath for, for the negotiation. Thank you very much. We'll now move to the third item, 7C, the updated seven months primary school appraisal. And again, note that the recommendation here is about hiring the village appraisers, not about whether we agree with the current appraisers or other options along those lines. So we do want to keep our discussion germane. Mr. Barath, I think we're back to you.
Yes, thank you, Chair Carter. Again, as introduced to the board last week at the work session, in receiving feedback from the board on reaching out to also the appraisers who conducted the original appraisal for Moore County Schools, I did contact Shaw Boykin. I did not hear back from them at the time that the executive summary was prepared and submitted. However, Friday evening, I did hear back from them. Due to some scheduling conflicts that they have amongst other items, they are not going to be able to expeditiously prepare anything for this, and they felt it would take an excess amount of time for them to also get a full understanding of the situations around it. Therefore, we continue our original recommendation that, to the superintendent, that village appraisers be selected to perform the appraisals. I also reached out to village appraisers to get a proposal from them for the services, and they had responded that for $10,000, they can complete the two appraisals as outlined by the board, and that would take them 45 calendar days, possibly less, upon which, receiving those, we will present it to the board at their first work session opportunity. And with that, I'm available to respond to any questions or comments.
Okay, is there a motion from the board?
I would move that we accept the village appraiser's proposal and that we move forward with the proposed appraisals of the two properties.
Your second?
Second.
A motion by Mr. Levy, second by Mr. Holmes. If anyone has a desire.
I do, if that's okay.
All right.
I don't know if you can hear me. I can't see you guys, so I don't know if it's my internet or what, but hopefully you guys can see me.
We can, and we can hear you well.
Okay, great. After our meeting last Monday, I was skeptical about getting another appraisal, because appraisals usually don't drum, uh, drum, don't drastically with a year, unless there are some major renovations taking place. I did some research, and I'm happy to send this to you guys all. It's right here, and I'll be happy to email it to you guys and to Ms. Murphy, so she can give it to the public if you guys choose to desire to have it. All the data that I, that can be found is on the GIS and online home searching sites like Zillow and Trulia. Just for the record, I normally would never use Zillow on a home I was listing to give me a true value or a measure of its worth, because they're just going by data and they're not considered outside factors. I looked at 62 homes, and I just could not do a market analysis for each one, so I apologize for that. But I wanted to say that I also looked at commercial listings in the area, and unfortunately, the only ones that I found were on Morganton Road, which to me was not really a true analysis of growth around the primary school. I decided to focus on the growth around the school since it would give the public a true measure of value. I made a chart of the homes that surround the area, surround the area of the school and with their tax value, what they may be worth if they were sell, to sell today, and I also added a section for homes that were sold and that are for sale. Most of the homes are over 50 years old, and there have only been five homes that sold in the area since 2016. Two homes sold in 2019, and one home sold in 2020. One home is currently for sale and has been on the market for 134 days. Surprisingly, the tax values were more on point on what they sold for compared to what Zillow and Trulia were reporting. The homes not including land are in the areas, are in the area of 45,000, and they go up to 130,000. Some of the online estimates are marked up a good 20%, but even with them marked up, the highest was around 195,000, and that was a newer home. My point for all this is that there isn't much growth in this area. There isn't growth, there, I'm sorry, there isn't an area for growth either. The people that lived here in these homes are not going anywhere. This is their community, not just a neighborhood. With my findings, the school isn't going to be worth a lot more than what it's appraising for. However, I do think having a local appraiser will be beneficial because they will know more knowledge of the area, the neighborhood, and the development trends. Do I want to pay for a second appraisal? No. I do not see much value in it, to be honest. I'd rather use that money for something else. If the second opinion appraisal gets approved tonight, though, I would like to make a request, if I could, if the new appraiser did not see the old appraise, appraisal, if that's, if John, if you can make that happen. I just, I want him to have a fresh look on it. I don't want to give him any extra, any extra of the old appraisal, if that makes sense to you. But listening to the public comments that were made in December, I could tell that this school means a lot to the community, so I want the board to keep that in mind when we get the second opinion appraisal back. I would like to put this, I would still like to put the school in upset bid process once we get a second opinion, though. And that's all I have to say. And I do, like I said, I can email this to you. It has a little map of all the, the homes that I did, and I'm more than willing to, to email all that to you as well.
If you would email that to me, Ms. Caldwell, we'll, we'll, we'll take it from there and determine what we need to post, and we'll certainly make it available to all board members. Ms. Caldwell, also just an administrative clarification.
Yeah.
If we find out that village appraisers has already seen the appraisal, does that disqualify them?
No, it just gives them a step up of, they would use all their data. So you kind of want them to go into a fresher look of what they would investigate on versus what the other appraiser investigated on.
Let me, let me explain my question again.
Yeah.
What my question was. My question was, with the statement that you just made administratively, if the board approves this, and I anticipate they're going to, John and I are sort of in a mess here. If we find out that they've already looked at it, we can't make them, tell them to forget about it.
Right.
Are you okay? We kind of get the spirit of what you're trying to say, but if they already looked at it, do you, are you suggesting to your fellow board members that we not proceed from there?
No, I, I think if they already looked at it, that we should just know about that, because that's something just to take into consideration, that they looked at it, and some of their information could be what the old appraisal had said.
Fine, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there other comments? All right, seeing, Mr. Hensley, you have a comment?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just have one other reminder. It's my recollection that the previous motion offered by Ed Dennison in past also included, in addition to getting an appraisal, cleaning up the road right of ways, cleaning up the cemetery encroachment, and a few other things. So I just want to remind everyone of that and just make sure that although it's not mentioned in today's action item, that the central office is taking action on those items.
That's exactly correct. I believe, Barath, you'll know more about that.
Yes, and I can let you know that we are starting the process later this week with the town of Southern Pines on the road closure issue. The surveyor has already planted out the cemetery encroachment. So those matters will have already been addressed when we give the information to village appraisers to begin their process.
Yes, ma'am, and I, and I will, I will affirm that as legal counsel, and I will affirm that, that we understand that direction from the board.
Mr. Levy? You're going to have to unmute.
Let me just, let me just say that all we're doing right now is allotting the money for something that we already approved. So I think we need to move forward and, and, and see where, see where we are, because this is, it's, it's very, very important that we get enough money for this property to help our students overall throughout the county. I'll submit.
Thank you. All right, let us now move to the question. Mr. Dennison, we'll begin with you. How do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Ms. Caldwell?
Aye.
Ms. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes? I lost him again. Mr. Hensley?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes, you're back. How do you vote?
Aye.
All right, the chair also votes aye. The motion carries 7-0. All right, we'll now move to item 8A. Dr. Grimace.
Thank you, Madam Chair. During your work session last week, you reached consensus to place an item on the regular board meeting agenda this evening for discussion of possible public explanation of the board's decision, previous decision to enter into a settlement agreement in the case of LP versus Moore County Board of Education. The board attorney had asked that board members be reminded that closed session is his recommended appropriate setting for any discussion of confidential student or personnel matters and for the consultation with board attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege. The board attorney has advised board members that to exercise great caution with respect to any public statements about this matter or any other similar matters, to ensure that confidentiality laws are not violated and to protect legal privilege. The board attorney has already addressed this with the board on a number of levels, and the direction that I have received from the board is to proceed with a public reading of the public statement that was issued on November 30th. I yield to your further direction, Madam Chair.
Okay, so this does not require any kind of motion?
No, ma'am, just looking for, for your direction as an interpreter of the board's intent.
We'll, we'll take a little bit of discussion here first and then return to you, Dr. Grimace. Well, Mr. Levy, I think your hand is back up. Is that, is that, okay?
No, actually, actually, it's not.
Do you want to make a comment?
Well, I, I will make, I will make a comment. In any case, the, one of the reasons why I wanted this on the board agenda, and I was the one who asked that it be placed there, was because I want the public to know and understand that we're a transparent board and that we, that we want to give the public as much information as humanly possible. And additionally, I want the board to consider our liability overall for such things. And the chair has graciously allowed that we're going to put on the agenda next time a discussion on our insurance liability, which I would caution the public is a very, very complex matter, because the legislature has given us a penalty for getting commercial insurance. And it has to do with our, our ability to assert what is known as sovereign immunity. But all of that needs to be aired, and it needs to be talked about in terms of board policy and in terms of the board being able to handle such matters at the least possible cost to our children and the least possible cost to our budget. So those are the two reasons why I asked it to be put on. The chair has placed the insurance aspect of it for next time, and I appreciate that. And I hope that the reading of this statement will help the public understand that while we're constrained by attorney-client privilege, that, and even though I was not on the board when a decision was made to settle this matter, at least we're going to be open and above board about the use of money to settle legal cases. Submit.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. All right, let's go on back to Dr. Grimace then for a reading of the statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In February 2017, Moore County Schools became aware of an alleged inappropriate relationship between the school resource officer, Mr. Joshua Evans, and a young woman who was then a high school student. Mr. Evans was immediately suspended, and the school system referred the matter to the Moore County Sheriff's Department for an independent investigation. Mr. Evans never returned to duty with Moore County Schools and resigned his position on February 20th, 2017. Moore County Schools cooperated fully with the law enforcement investigation, which led to multiple criminal charges against Mr. Evans, but did not result in a conviction. In September 2020, the former student filed a civil lawsuit against Mr. Evans and Moore County Schools. Because of the different standards of proof, the absence of a criminal conviction is not a bar to civil liability. In November 2020, Moore County Schools participated in a mediation with the plaintiff and her attorneys in an effort to resolve the case amicably. The parties reached a tentative agreement, which the Board of Education approved on November 30th. The settlement agreement specifically states that Moore County Schools denies any negligence, liability, or wrongdoing, and that the purpose of the settlement is to avoid the expense, disruption, and inherent uncertainty of litigation. The Board of Education is pleased that this matter has been resolved in a fair and respectful manner that was mutually agreeable to both parties. Moore County Schools is legally prohibited from sharing confidential personnel and student information. We ask that the media and members of the community understand the extreme sensitivity of this case and the paramount importance of the plaintiff's well-being and respect for privacy in this matter. Submitted.
Thank you, Dr. Grimace. All right, we will now move on to the superintendent's question. Dr. Grimace, back to you.
Madam Chair, thank you. Madam Chair and members of the board, I, I use this time when needed, when there's, there's something to share with you that has not already been shared during your work session or any of the other discussions. And I've got two items to share with you this evening. To begin with,
To begin with, as you did this evening, school board members recognize and express their formal appreciation for students, employees, and patrons every month during the year. We might take a little bit of time off in the summer, but we recognize people throughout most of the year. As part of National School Board Recognition Month each January, we also take time, we, meaning myself and the staff, we take the time to recognize you. Very often, students join in, and sometimes parents do too. But we all get together and we recognize you and to express our appreciation for your service, your leadership, and your achievements on our behalf. That recognition is tempered this year, but only by a mere pandemic. Rest assured that all of us remain grateful to you and for your hard work and the contribution of your generous contribution of your time in service to our students, our employees, our families, our community, and our mission. I want to let you all know that there's been a collection of a variety of expressions of appreciation on the part of our schools that's been collected for you all. And as soon as we have the opportunity to be back together again, we're going to put those on display for you as soon as we're we're all back together again. So we're going to keep them in safekeeping, and we'll follow up and have a little celebration of the words I've shared with you this evening. But on on behalf of all of the employees, the students, and and our parents in particular, members of our community, this is my opportunity to express our thanks and gratitude for your service. The second item that I want to share with you is it just doesn't seem right. Every time I've shared that before, there's been a room full of people to clap with me, so we'll have to have an excuse to do that later. The other report is a reflection on the first week of the second semester. This is a topic on which a lot of folks have interest. What does it look like at the end of the first week? That we've we've got all of our students who desire to be in in-person instruction are back in school, they're back in grades K through 5, and they're back in school five days a week. So I'm going to just provide you with preliminary data and some preliminary anecdotal information about our first week last week. The overall average daily membership, excuse me, the first numbers I'm going to share with you are a comparison of September 1st versus January 11th, September 1st versus January 11th. Overall, average daily membership increased from 12,410 students on September 1st to 12,472 on January 11th. That's your total average daily membership. That's both virtual and in-person. Again, September 1st to January 11th, total number of students in in-person instruction increased from 8,841 to 10,254, inclusive of all grade levels. That's K through 5. That is made up of a of differences of in K through 5 plus 739, 6 through 8 plus 350, 9 through 12 plus 324. Total number of students in full-time virtual academy decreased from 1,188 to 862, inclusive of all grade levels. K through 5 decreased 689, 6 through 8 decreased 336, 6 through 12 decreased 326. Again, these numbers are preliminary and and still subject to some final refinement, but I think it does give you a pretty good, solid illustration of how things look as we begin the semester. There were night, this was a question that came up last week, 91 requests to shift from in-person to virtual. So even with the substantial increases in in-person instruction, we did have 91 requests to shift from in-person to virtual. I believe that's maybe 1%, actually less than 1%. 39 of those 91 requests to move to the virtual academy for the whole semester have been granted. Principals have worked with parents to find alternative ways to manage the majority of the rest. So the majority of the rest of the balance between 39 and 91 have been managed by parents working with principals that have looked at creative ways that don't involve a full one semester commitment to the virtual academy. There were only a few that were denied due to the fact that the request had nothing to do with COVID-19 concerns. And it remains important, just notification to our parents, that any other parents that have similar concerns, it's very important that they start to work with their principals to see what options are available to them. Of course, our primary obsession during this first week has been the transition of our K-5 students to Plan A five days per week. Our primary points of focus are transportation, grades 4 and 5 with their higher pupil-teacher ratios, and our breakfast and lunch times when it's necessary for our students to remove their masks. Between Dr. Locklear, Dr. Metcalf, Ms. Gephardt, and I, district leadership and our principals put eyes on all of our 4th and 5th grade classes and kept tabs on our breakfast and lunch operations. Mr. Barath, and Mr. Dockry, and Mr. Bowie have been keeping their eyes on our increased numbers of K-5 students on those school buses. We have known all along that social distancing would be our primary challenge, and that was the case in two of our schools with in two of our schools. So that was the case in two of our schools. We have two schools where we're looking at some situations that are going to require some adjustments, and we're working with the principals on that. And then we've got two other schools with some modest challenges that that are going to bear monitoring, may not need immediate action, but but are going to be monitored very closely. Of course, monitoring is what we do all the time, and you can assume that that'll be the case in all of our schools, in in all areas, not just 4th and 5th grade, lunch, breakfast, and transportation. But clearly, those are the areas that that pose the the greatest challenge to to our efforts to move forward with in-person instruction. In the meantime, our commitment to all of our other COVID-19 safety protocols remains robust with screening, masks, hand washing, disinfecting, isolating, and quarantining. As we expected, we experienced a spike of reported positive cases and quarantines immediately following the winter break. Remember, we had had sort of a reduction there for two weeks across the community, actually, as the as the surge after Thanksgiving diminished briefly and before the Christmas, the post-Christmas, Hanukkah, New Year's surge began. There was about a two-week lull there. And sure enough, in the week after New Year's, we we saw the numbers going back up across the community. And when they go across the community, that increases the number of cases involving our students and staff. But as I explained last week, those the numbers, as I explained last week, let me point out that that the exposures, the infections that we have, we're finding are happening outside of school, and the secondary transmission within our buildings is mitigated by our very strict protocols of isolation and quarantining. The other thing was is that part of that immediate spike that we had right after the holidays was somewhat of an accounting phenomenon because of the numbers related as much to a backlog of reports as much as they did a post-holiday resurgence. So we had about seven days there of reporting. Our offices were closed, and for our parents to contact our school nurses and our employees to make contact and let us know for those that had had positive tests during those seven days before school opened, all of them came in on the same day. So we really began looking at our cases, starting not on Tuesday so much, but on Wednesday and Thursday. The reported cases balanced out throughout the rest of the week. At the same time, we continued to experience very few cases of secondary transmission, as I indicated, within school. So while the numbers of our student and staff absences related to quarantine are indeed spiking due to exposure outside of school, we're still not seeing evidence of this very very, very few cases of COVID spread in our schools. On the flip side, I'd be remiss if I did not acknowledge the potential impact of quarantines on our operations and our teachers' workloads. Today, today, as of today, January 11th, today's 403 student absences due to quarantine are a new high for this year, and that high was previously set on December 1st in the aftermath of Thanksgiving. Friday's 58 staff absences due to quarantine were a new high for the year, which had just been set on January 6th. And Friday's combined 456 absences due to quarantine were a new high for the year, which also had been set on January 6th. Now, immediately say, how do you have absences on a snow day? Well, we didn't really have absences on snow day, but we still got reports because our parents knew and our school nurses knew that we were still open for business, even though the students were at home, it was an optional workday. We still collected information on reports from the between the between our school nurses and our parents on the number of reported quarantines that had been determined. And so that's where those numbers come from. So that was Friday, 58. Had we been in school that day, had everybody been in, these are the absences that we would have had. Goes to show you how we monitor the numbers. Even on a day like that, we're still getting reports. We also had the most group quarantines of the year last week with four classes, a school bus, and five sports teams. So far, only one of those group quarantines resulted in a rare single case of secondary transmission. And so I repeat, as I did last week, isolation and quarantine is one of our strategies that we use, where we shift teachers from in-person teaching to remote teaching and students from in-person learning to remote learning for a defined period of time, as opposed to having entire schools of the whole district go back to Plan C. This is one of those ways that we stay open. Most of our children are in person, and those that are in remote learning, very limited, but still making enough progress to keep us moving forward, just as I reported last week. And as as long as we're keeping secondary transmission to a minimum, not only are our staff and students safe in school, one can argue they may be safer in school than they might be in the community. And if that is the case, if that if that hypothesis is correct, and and right now we have a lot of data to support that, we're actually helping to mitigate the spread of the disease throughout our community. Madam Chair, that completes my report. I'm available to answer any questions. I remain at your service.
Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. That was a very complete report. At this point, let us just move on to board comments. Mr. Dennison, do you have comments?
Yes, ma'am, I do. I have probably more this evening than I normally have. I'd like to clear up a misconception that some may have had concerning how far in advance the the chair is to be notified for an item to be placed on the Moore County Schools' board agenda. Moore County Schools' Policy 1321 Board Meeting Agenda states, "A request to have an item of business placed on the agenda must be received at least six working days before the meetings." The request to have the items placed on the agenda for January the 4th meeting were emailed to the chair on December the 18th. Winter break started the next day, December the 19th, and ended on January the 4th, 2021, the date of our meeting. So this was only one working day before our January 4th board meeting and not the sixth work, six working days required by Policy 321. And I just want to emphasize, the reason for the six-day requirement is to allow staff time to prepare a presentation to the board, informing them of what we are presently doing. And once the board members understand what we're doing presently, they can ask specific questions to get any additional information they would like. My other comments are general. Most of the comments about Moore County Schools I hear concern finances and opening schools for all students. As far as opening our schools for all students, I also want all our, I also want all our students in school full-time, as long as we're doing everything we can to ensure the safety of our students and staff. We are also required to follow the governor's requirements and the recommendations of our state and local health departments and the CDC. As for finances, I am willing to consider any recommendations that will reduce our expenses as long as it does not have a negative impact on student achievement, especially those of our economically disadvantaged students. It must also meet the requirements and restrictions placed on us by our state and federal governments. As a reminder, we have to present our budget to the county before we know of the funding we will receive from our state, federal, or local governments. Obviously, we have to make our best guess on what we might receive, but if we do not receive the funding we projected in our budget, changes will need to be made to the programs and services we we had planned for our students, along with any personnel changes needed to meet our budget. Unlike businesses who can raise prices or governments who can raise taxes, we have to stay within our budget because we have no taxing authority. As a side note, as far as funding goes, the January 2020 issue of the Carolina Journal in the article "Pay Grades" stated that North Carolina ranks 47th out of the 50 states in K through 12 public school funding per pupil and 49th out of the 50 states for K through 12 public school funding as a percent of gross domestic product. Finances are important, but our most important responsibility after after ensuring the safety and security of our students and staff is to ensure all our students graduate well, well-prepared for college or career. I hear I hear and see comments that the reasoning for replacing our three previous board members was to make Moore County Schools one of the best public school districts in North Carolina. Well, I have news for you. We're already there. And Moore County Schools has a 2020 graduation rate of 93.5%, the highest it's ever been, has the best graduating rate in North Carolina for any district graduating over 700 students, is the 12th highest graduation rate of all 115 districts in North Carolina, with a graduation rate of our African-American students has increased from 70.6% to 92.8% since 2010, and is 5.2% above the graduation rate of all North Carolina high school graduates. With a graduation rate for our Hispanic students has increased from 60.4% to 90.5% since 2010, and is 2.9% above the graduation rate of all North Carolina public school graduates. Moore County Schools' graduation rate of our economically disadvantaged students, which is 40% of our student population, that are the majority of students in our lower-performing schools, has increased from 69.9% to 87.5% since 2010. And that is, this is an indication, even though we have de-rated schools, we have been able to improve the achievement of those students to where their graduation rate is only 1/10 of 1% below the graduation rate for all North Carolina public school graduates for 2020. And Moore County Schools, as you saw tonight, is one of the best career and technical education programs in North Carolina. This factual information proves that Moore County Schools is already one of the best public school districts in the state. Student achievement is the most important measurement of how well we are doing as a board for our students. And yes, there is room for improvement by addressing other issues that have been raised. I support all education in Moore County, but remember, all our decisions should be made for what is best for Moore County Schools' traditional public school students, not for charter schools, private schools, religious schools, or because it's what the public wants us to do. We, as a board, are statute-royal responsible for our students, not for all students in Moore County. Each charter, private, and any other school has their own board of directors responsible for their own students. And as a point of information, I served as vice chair on the Pope John Paul II School Advisory Board for two years prior to being elected to Moore County Schools' Board of Education. As we improve in these other areas, we will come closer to ensuring all our students graduate well-prepared for college or career and fulfilling our primary responsibility as a traditional public school board of education. That's it. Sorry it was so long.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Mr. Levy?
Just one more. Yes, thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank the superintendent for his very, very comprehensive explanation of our situation with regard to COVID-19. I don't know about other members of the board, but I've gotten many, many inquiries about the wisdom of doing what we're doing. And I have explained in countless emails to parents, some thinking we've gone too far too fast into face-to-face learning, some thinking we've gone too slow. But what we have done is follow the science and follow the statistics, and we know that students are better off in school rather than not being in school. And that is quite important. I was very, very heartened to see that during this board meeting, we had many votes, which were 7-0, that we all agreed to, that we all got together on. I was saddened, on the other hand, about two comments that I heard, one from the chair, which seemed to direct a cut at me because... because I was in favor of better and stronger CTE education, saying, well, we've already done that. That's what you said in the campaign. And Mr. Dennison, who just reminded us that we're already the best school in the, in the state or in the nation. Well, we are a good school. We have good staff. We have good teachers, but we can do much better. We have derated schools, as Mr. Dennison said. And it's important that we address those derated schools. We have other problems, including, but not limited to, a lawsuit where we were just, had to put out $200,000, $200,000 out of our students' money to pay for a lawsuit. That is, that's something that needs to be looked into. One of the things is, and I, I, and I still then have to allude to Mr. Simon's comment, which I found to be very, very terrible and and beyond belief, actually, and is at, it's, and is venom. What we, as your new members, are trying to do is we are trying to better our schools and trying to cooperate with the Board. I do believe that the, that the Chair made a mistake and the Board made a mistake by not adding our items to the agenda, by not adding our D schools to the agenda quicker. By the way, to address Mr. Dennison's statement, we, our, our, our staff was working over the Christmas break. And the reason why I say that our staff was working over the Christmas break was that on December the 31st, which was a Christmas break day, we got our agenda for the next meeting. And I was, I asked specifically whether our senior staff works over Christmas break and was told that they do. So that's not what it's all about. What it's all about is cooperating, making sure that we call, we, 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 we call it what it is. It's about working with each other. And we can do that. And we've shown that we can do that. And we've shown that we can be strong and that we can give compliments where compliments are due and criticism where criticism is due. No, this is not going to be the same kumbaya board that maybe we've had in past. This is going, these are going to be diverse people, a businessman, a lawyer, people from differing backgrounds. My background is also teaching. And we're going to ask different questions. And we're going to seek different answers. But in doing so, we'll do the best job we possibly can for all our students in Moore County. For all of our Moore County students. And we will also, contrary to what I think Mr. Dennison says, we will also take into consideration and should take into consideration our charter students who are Moore County students. They are children from Moore County Schools. And they are students who are getting money from our taxpayers to support their education. They are children who, who are getting a good education. And I think we helped in their education today by approving the sale of the, of the Southern Pines Elementary School to Moore Montessori. So, and so I would thank the Board for its cooperation. And please remember that we will, from time to time, get into discussions. The discussions might be heated. But in the end, I know that every person on this Board of Education is going to do what he and she believe is best for all our students and all our taxpayers in Moore County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Caldwell, do you have comments?
Really? You're going to make me go after that? I was trying to go on a good, positive note and then lean you through in the bat there. No, I have no comments. I think Ed said it all, and I want to stay positive on this meeting. So I am just going to end it, so.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
Madam Chair, I, I want to first thank Dr. Grimace for his ongoing leadership and extra efforts to follow up on key items, initiatives. I know there have been, since, just since our work session, we've had several key items that had to be followed up on to present tonight. There were lots of questions from Board members, request items for our meetings. So thank you, Dr. Grimace, for consistently following up with your team to be prepared and to get us prepared so that we can effectively move through our Board items. Also, I, I want to commend Dr. Grimace again and his leadership team for our meeting. Friday, we had an all-day budget meeting with Madam Chair, Mr. Hensley, myself. It was great information that was put together for, for that day. We got started at 8:30. And we had a lot of information, lots of questions, great conversation. It was just a great meeting. And it, it began to prepare us for what's to come for upcoming budget discussions. So again, we hit the ground running simply because Dr. Grimace had prepared his team to get us the information that, that we need. And I want to just end, oftentimes, I've noticed that in so many of our leadership staff presentations on items that they are presenting for us, oftentimes, they begin and they have their very first slide with our school vision and our school mission. And I want to end my comments just to, to reiterate and read what our vision and our mission is. And, and for Moore County Schools, we, we will ensure that educational experiences inspire students to reach their full potential and lead productive lives in an ever-changing world. And our mission is, Moore County Schools creates a supportive, engaging, and safe learning environment that builds knowledge, skills, and ability, and abilities needed for future successes. And we know that we want our students to be engaged and inspired so that they can succeed. And working collaboratively as a Board, we, we will continue to work together to, to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Holmes?
Yes, thank you. I would first like to tell the teachers, classified staff, I know that this is a real try-in time. We get your concerns and your frustrations. Even the parents, if y'all have any concerns, feel free to reach out to any of the Board members, myself. The Superintendent will be right there to, to help you see if we can't remedy that problem. With that, I'll, I'll end. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hensley?
First, I want to say that being in elected office is awesome, and I'm just happy to be here, representing the people. I do want to clarify a couple of things. In last week's work session, I want to make it clear, I gave some scenarios by which our, the agreement on the table with Moore Montessori School was not ironclad. I want to make it, I want to make it clear that I was not accusing the current Board or leadership of Moore Montessori Community School of planning to flip the property or any portion of it. I was stating potential future scenarios and our need to guard against and protect our interests, the interests of the students and the Moore County taxpayers. In response to Ed's comments, which now I feel compelled to respond to, you know, we did submit our request six working days prior to the meeting. Moore County Schools was at work, although our students were not in school. You know, most of the classified staff was at work. And in fact, it was a leave period, a leave period for the central office. I said repeatedly, when we were debating the motion to overrule the Chair, that our requests were properly and timely submitted. If the Chair didn't believe that they were timely submitted, then she could have objected to them, as could anyone else during the discussion, to bring it up repeatedly after the fact, you know, well, I don't know. Mr. Dennison also keeps mentioning graduation rates. Look, I am, I love Moore County Public Schools. That's why I'm here, to improve them in many ways and with the things I bring to the table. But the fact of the matter is, we cannot fix things unless we have honest discussions on where we're at. People can talk about graduation rates, graduation rates. Anyone can be a pump by reducing discipline and academic standards. So why don't we talk about reading and math proficiency and the performance on other standardized tests? The fact of the matter is, the first cohort that Moore Montessori School got when they opened their doors, students that they got from our schools had a reading proficiency of 44%. Two years later, two years later, those same students had a reading proficiency of 72%. We've got, we've got a lot of successes. We've got a lot of things to be proud of. But we got a lot of things we need to roll up our sleeve and, and fix. As Bob said, you know, we will give praise where praise is needed. And we will give criticism where criticism is deserved. We will insist that rules are followed. That's a fundamental tenet of a Board. As for recent divisiveness on the Board, you know, there's been articles written about it and this and that. But if you pay attention and you look, and Bob pointed this out and alluded to it, if you pay attention and look, most of those are just, most of those disagreements have been considering, have been concerning, following the rules and, and procedural issues, not items on the agenda. For agenda items, as Bob pointed out, most of our, most of the agenda items, we've had lively discussion, we've had debate, we've had thoughtful consideration. And if you look at the votes, most of them were overwhelming, 7-0 or 6-1. But even the votes that are 4-3, that's part of democracy. That is part of a healthy, functioning Board that discusses things, debates things, have careful, thoughtful consideration. And then the Board members vote their conscience and the chips fall where they may. So we've had a lot of accomplishments. We've had tons of accomplishments in the last couple of months. Now that we've gotten, I believe, most of the procedural issues and, and, and following the rules issues behind us. And once we start adding what I believe are important items to the agenda, then we'll be able to have many discussions and debates and decisions on important issues. So Madam Chair, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Just a matter of clarification. I, I agree with you, Moore Montessori is a very fine little school. But please note that all of their children did not come from the Moore County Schools. You know, they opened, they are open to children from outside our county as well as homeschooled and, and children who, thank you.
I will agree with that, yes.
And children who have come from both private and, and other charter schools as well. And they are just in the middle of their third year. So, you know, there, there's not been any testing at this point. So I wish them a great deal of success as they continue on. But, but you can't, can't put their reading level of their entry students in kindergarten, first and second grade off on the Moore County Schools in general. So again, I do wish them well, and I'm pleased that we've been able to proceed with the, with the sale of the property because it, it will benefit children in many, many ways throughout this community for many, many years. With that, I have no further comments. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move the meeting be adjourned. And thank you, one and all, and happy birthday to Philip. His birthday's Friday.
Happy birthday, Philip.
Happy birthday, Philip. And I'll second.
I second, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, motion by Mr. Dennison, second by Ms. Thompson. All those in favor, raise your hand. All right, the motion carries 7-0. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.